We didn't.
Good morning, everybody. We start our meeting with the pleasure of Commissioner Foyle.
Of the United States of America and the Republican Party's stance on the foundation of the individual liberty that has to be served.
Morning, everybody. Welcome to our in-county meeting of Hartford meeting twenty twenty four. And it's in the room with Chuck Nicholson, last week, Commissioner Foyle, Commissioner Godu, Leila.
Tilla. Tilla. How many every week?
Sorry, I've been three years.
Tomato, tomato. Kendra, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably put your last name, Mayall.
Close, Mayall.
Mayall, okay. All right, let them on.
Yeah.
Jason Smith, in my cell. In Juneland, we have Jude Gates. We have Catherine Mian and is that Major?
Basha.
Basha, okay. And Jason Henry. And I think that's it for now. I'm sure he'll chime in as we move along. So we'll go to our openings for the automatic transfer switch.
I move to award the proposal for automatic transfer switch replacement on generator to Electrical Engineering and Service Company LLC on an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, is there any discussion?
I just thank you, Jude, for circling this back again because we have a really good place and we appreciate your attention to detail always saving the county money.
There was a discussion. That was about half, wasn't it?
Last night.
On motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. IAQ HVAC duct cleaning.
Move to award the proposal for IAQ HVAC duct cleaning to air duct clean for the Mitchell Building bathroom exhausts and the ABC dining air handling unit for an amount not to exceed one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and to impact fire services for the Mitchell Building air handling unit and ducts and for the AB and C block units at the DOC for an amount not to exceed twelve thousand nine hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
On to the incentive agenda.
I move to approve the March seventh, twenty twenty four, public and non-public meeting. That's.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any additions, extractions in the minutes that we've been? Okay.
Good.
Okay, on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I heard yes. Surplus equipment request.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to the HIPAA RSA twenty eight eight A and declare two Vulcan infection steamers from long-term care services dietary surplus with items to be properly disposed.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
None on motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million three hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents for the period ending March ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second, motion has been made and some people on the motion, Commissioner Foyle? Lots of your questions?
I was just saying it's right in line. I just for the public, as we talked about for the last few payrolls, this is just falling almost within a few thousand dollars of one about a few weeks ago, and we're just right in line where we should be, so.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Is that good?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner's updates. I want to start, I invited that, I think her name off of her, because I wanted to recognize her in person, only we do, the Commission for the American College of Healthcare Administrators, Board of Directors, and Awards Committee has acknowledged Kendra and awarded her, received the new assisted living administrator award. So we want to make sure you appear in person so we could congratulate you and tell you what a great job you're doing. And thank you so much. Appreciate it. Other Commissioners? You want to say anything?
Just you're, you've really brought a lot of energy over to the assisted living community as well as helping out on the other side. And we appreciate all your efforts, your energy, your new ideas, creative approaches. And, you know, Rockingham always prides itself on being at the forefront and progressing in a lot of ways. And we were certainly exemplifying that. So thank you.
You know, getting this award, I think, exemplifies the good work that's being done here in Rockingham County. And you specifically earned the accolades. And I'm proud to be part of the group that's overseeing this. And the public should be very much in tune with the fact that we're running the first-class facility here that is, that private, the private sector would be jealous of in a lot of ways. I think we're better here than we were than in the private sector. So people should be lining up to want to come here. And I know they are. Good job.
And we're both.
And we're both.
Do you want to, do you want to say anything at all? If you want something, I don't want you on the spot.
Sure. Thank you so much. As much as I received this award, I really think it's a testament to all of our employees and associates over in assisted living. I know that when I came in, I shook things up a little bit and kind of took us in a new direction. And I think it's really a testament to all of our associates from bottom to top about how dedicated they are to our community, our residents, and their passion. I wouldn't have been able to accept this award without their vision, their standing behind us, their dedication to our residents. So as much as it is, is an award that I've been given, I really think it's an award and a testament to our team and how much they care. And I think that we are one of the best in New Hampshire. We do have a waitlist of eighteen individuals who are looking to move in. They've come in, they've done assessments, they've been approved, and they're just pending to move in. So we'll be fully occupied by next Friday, and hopefully more to come.
Great. Keep the great work.
Thank you.
You're holding wellness day if you want, follow the rest of the meeting. It's a show of ones, so feel free, whatever you feel you want to do. Okay. Other Commissioners want to chime in on other issues?
Just that we're in ongoing union negotiations.
Same with the legal assistance and all is well.
All right. So now we've got to do requests for utilization wellness fund.
I move to approve the utilization of fifteen thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty four County Wellness Fund and ten thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty four Signal Wellness Fund to purchase equipment for the employee fitness center and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion has been made. Any discussion?
It's a nice morale that we have the wellness dollars and it's a good utilization of those funds for, to give staff enough.
This will be for the new building?
Yeah.
So we're going to do cap this year, half next year. There will be some residual that will go to the capital fund, but it'll be small dollars at best. And I'm helpful and thankful that the sheriff's office has a place to store this stuff. It'll be kept safe and dry, and meet all the terms of that. And so we can get it into the.
I think, Allison, it's great to see that there's thought about the, you know, like we're, we're taking this on ahead of time, thinking about these things, because this is all rolled into some of these soft costs and other additional costs. And by taking it on this way.
Well, thank you.
It's really thoughtful approach.
Very good. On the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Travel and training class.
I move to approve a travel and training request for our human resources employee AK to attend the UKG Women in Business Summit held June third through fifth, twenty twenty four in Austin, Texas, at an estimated total cost of six hundred and five dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussions?
Yeah, I was shocked to go to Texas for six hundred dollars. And of course, I looked at the detail.
Yeah, me too.
That cover of the bill, that's generous of UKG. And sounds like they should be doing even more to help us through. Maybe she'll come up with some good information to assist us in the troubles that we're having, or at least be able to have an opportunity to express that to the appropriate people.
Or just that community, too. I'm sure a lot of, there's other, you know, networking that can happen about how you are triaging some of these issues.
Right, right. So I, this is a good time.
Yes.
You realize it's pretty hot in Austin, Texas.
I've never been, so I.
Oh, I'm sure it'll be all indoor.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Sheriff's Office, line item transfer.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of eighty thousand dollars dated March fifth, twenty twenty four, transferring from sheriff's deputies to bail of salary expense as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
You go first.
Oh, do, would you guys mind explaining, Catherine?
Yeah, that's where I was coming from, too.
Yep, not a problem. So this is kind of a two-part explanation. So the first part is easy one, that the courthouse has been busier than anticipated. So bailiffs are working longer hours and such. Usually, we can absorb that and kind of, you know, it levels itself out. However, there was a missing piece during our budget process. The way the bailiffs are paid, the state reimburses us fully for them. So this is good news that even though our, you know, expense line is over, our revenue is also going to be up as well. So it is a wash. But at the time, when we were doing our budget, and it's a little tricky with them, that every three years, the state follows the collective bargaining agreement for the state bailiffs and sets that rate that we can reimburse for. So we knew about the first rate going from a hundred and twenty-one dollars a day to a hundred and fifty-one. However, there was another increase that we were not aware of that took place on July fourteenth of twenty twenty-three that brought them up to a hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents per day. So right off the bat, at the very beginning of the year, we were already behind essentially about fifteen dollars a day per person. So kind of, you know, doing the math, we, Chuck and I have been watching it throughout the year, noticed it was trending over, and we're not going to make it through to June. So that's kind of the, the issue there is that it was lack of information from the state as to exactly what the rate was going to be. And we've hit this in the past as well.
So two other questions. One, I assume that we didn't account for it on the revenue side either. So we'll see increased revenues as a result?
Yes, that right now is trending at the same amount, about ten percent above what we expected previous time of year.
Okay. And then the second question is, in terms of sheriff, that line that we're pulling from, you feel comfortable in terms of where that we're going to be at the end of the year?
So on the second page of the documentation that we sent over, I kind of ran our analysis that if, you know, even by, you know, taking out this amount of money, what we anticipate would be left at the end of the year. And it's a healthy number, so we're confident with it.
And, and what helped that was that unanticipated vacancy, the time that it takes to fill that. So that helped absorb some of the salary line of not having to pay that individual that I left.
Yeah. And we've also had an individual out on military leave with no pay, so that helped as well.
Back, Commissioner Godu?
And can we assume that you're considering these changes for the budget that we're putting in for this year that's already being factored in?
Yes. So right now, we're in year one of three of the contracts. So we know all the way out through June of twenty twenty-five what their rates will be. June of twenty twenty-five, that'll be another unknown. We do our best to communicate with the state. But like I said, they didn't even know until June of last year when the, because it had to pass through the budget at the state level, kind of where those rates were going to be.
Fundamentally, it's just your house, anyway.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Further question? If not?
Thank you.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We want to define updates. I'll start with the sheriff, since we're just talking to you.
Yeah, good, good morning. Busy as usual. Did you want to say something, Major?
No, I, no, I think we're caught up on most stuff. I know, I missed the beginning of the meeting last time where I know Commissioner Cherichello talked about the earmark grants. I'm still waiting for Representative Pappas's office did reach out to me to tell us to anticipate a packet coming up in the next couple of weeks. So I'm hoping to see that soon for working on those earmark projects. And so I'll be able to start filling that stuff out and working with Catherine, and we'll get right on that to make sure we take full advantage of that.
Okay, you guys are going to take care of the paperwork inside.
Catherine and I will coordinate and then do anything with Chuck that needs to be done on.
All right, let's move it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jason Henry. Morning.
Good morning. I mean, busy here with the union negotiations and the budget. Seems we eaten up most of the time here. One thirty-five inside. This morning, we had, did a promotion ceremony for Corporal Blake, Blake to Sergeant. He was actually promoted June of twenty-three, but he was deployed. He recently came back about, about three weeks ago. So we're happy to have him back on third shift. And that's, that'll be a big help for our staff. The twenty-fifth will be the next academy starting up, so it's the one twenty-second, one twenty-second. And with, because we have staffing now, we're actually able to send four people to this academy, which is great. So we've only been sending one or two. We do have a lot of uncertified staff. This has been helpful. Then we'll have another academy come August, and then one in September. So if we keep trending the way we are, we'll be able to put four to five people in the academy at a time and get caught up where our certifications. And on that, the Apex simulator machine, we're doing a lot of training on that. As I told before, police stands training wants us to come down at some point, use it there and us demonstrate working with the sheriff to get his people on board for doing scenarios. There was a massive update on the system, and it's, it's even better than it was before. We can manipulate objects and put things in different places, and it's easier to use. And instead of just Major Constantino and Lieutenant Warden, as they put it to me, that they're older now, and we're using, we have three younger staff who are very much into gaming and computers, who can do this very quickly and run things through and, and multitask where the other two cannot. So they're very happy. We're getting some younger staff doing this. Yeah, on that?
I see word, Jason.
That was from them. That's it.
One question for you, though. Have you adjusted the firing range so we don't have to have people kneeling down?
Yeah, that was, that was just because we had the reporter and it was so short. And then it wasn't really adjusted, but it's all good now. Matter of fact, used to be you had to do the firing range before you could do anything. Now you just have to start there, and you can skip the firing range, and you can go do all the things now. So this update is huge. But thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Jude Gates.
Morning. We are busy as always, business as usual, all as well. The only thing noteworthy this week, the building oversight committee met on Tuesday. They seem very content with the report. They will have a verbal report ready for the executive committee meeting when they meet at the beginning of May. Other than that, we have seen a few more applications and interviews. So I don't know if that's hopefully a sign of things to come. But we have a plumber starting on the twenty-fifth, which that's two, two years at least we've been looking for. We had a number of applications for motor services. So things are looking up a little bit. Autumn's doing a great job. And also, we seem to be getting a few more applicants. So I think that's good news.
All right. It seems like we are turning the corner on that, on that issue. Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Wood, this is the limit. I'm going to put Allison because usually I wait till the last, and I don't want to wait till last.
Basically, we've just been super busy with the two contracts, budget. We have some personnel items going on, issues going on that we're trying to address. And we have just started to get into the wellness stuff now, like pushing things out. We have chair massages that we're going to be notifying everybody. We've contacted the officials and division directors. So we've secured a vendor. So we'll have that going on. And I believe today or tomorrow, we have a lunch and learn with Harlow, which is one of our vendors, that kind of offsets, helps to offset those deductible costs. If you're going to have an X-ray, an MRI, any kind of testing and stuff like that. So they'll be in the staff dining today. I'm sorry, I don't know the times. But Eileen is running with that, my new HR assistant, and she's fantastic. So she's getting things really happening here. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Chuck Nicholson?
As Allison said, we've been busy with negotiations. Obviously budgets, just a reminder again, departmental budgets are due for the end of this month by statute. Departments just have to worry about their operating expenses, though, as far as payroll and payroll expenses. I'll take care of that. But I'll share that analysis with the, with the departments as far as what those numbers look like, though. We do have a workshop session today that is at one o'clock. It's on Teams. It will be recorded. So if people can attend, they can check in on it. We also did email around a budget packet document. So it has some like, you know, major dates that are in there as a predicted budget calendar, which I think will probably mostly come true. Well, again, sometimes it's just like, okay, well, first Friday is in May is going to be the executive committee meeting. That Thursday before that is going to be the public hearing that the commissioners will have on their proposed budget, you know. So some of these dates, you know, you just have to roll it, you know, it's usually on a Thursday or a Friday. You just have to, as years go by. But this is a leap year. So I actually had to move the day number back by two on the calendar. So, but, so we have that kind of planned out. And Cheryl and I, you know, usually do, you know, have pretty good communication as far as trying to help set what that calendar could be and going over resolutions and things like that. One thing that was not emailed around is that there's also a document that we have that can help departments with kind of munis instructions as far as how to utilize that piece of the budget, because that's what departments will do. As in past years, you actually go into munis itself, and you'll actually enter in your operating expenses. And again, you won't see your, the payroll lines, because again, that's what finance office will, will take care of. And actually, I personally get involved down to the person on that as far as, you know, look at the numbers. One thing of note, when you're entering in to munis and you want to do the itemized budget piece, like say it's training conferences, and you know what training conferences you want, please, in those, you know, detail items, the dollar amounts, do whole dollars. Because we budget in whole dollars. So, but if you use down to the penny on the itemized list, it's going to sum up to down to the cents. And it's going to roll out that that's your proposed amount. And we don't, you know, like for training conferences, but we don't budget in, you know, cents. We budget in whole dollars. And just a word, too, if you're doing line transfers, same thing. Don't, don't put pennies. It's whole dollars. So other than that, I think in the end, payroll went a little bit better this time around. It got them a little bit earlier. The, this February's retirement system file is not going to be fun, because we had payrolls done in two different systems. So I was working on that till after midnight last night, into this morning. So that has to get done, obviously, today, because by the end of the day tomorrow, it has to be a clean file. All exceptions cleared. And we, a couple of them, retirement system actually has to clear. So, yeah, they actually, retirement system actually put out there a survey about how their new version three pension gold is. It's been a rocky start with that, too. So they'll get some feedback.
Sounds like you're a busy guy.
Yeah, and the normal thing as, as far as, you know, obviously with grants. And again, I'll get in touch with Harvey as far as going over that funded analysis that they had, because there may be opportunities to increase those portions since the commissioners did approve some of the reallocation. As far as like, for example, we have four million right now that's in the one point four expenditure category. That's for, you know, COVID prevention mitigation in dense work site settings, HVAC improvements, you know, equipment stuff would cover that, you know, the amphitheater, that's covered, you know, sheriff's office, county attorneys. So the barriers put up in deeds also count. So maybe that four million could go up a little bit from the reallocation.
Yes.
Very good.
That seems good.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Kendra. I know that you, I have called you, but I'm asking you if you want to talk about your department briefly.
Sure.
Things are going on.
Yeah. Again, we currently were, our census is at forty, forty-seven. Next Friday, we'll be completely occupied. We have eighteen applicants on the waitlist who have been approved looking to move in. And then we also have three applicants who have been approved, but they don't have any funding. So we're waiting for their Medicaid to get approved. Unfortunately, we do have active flu cases in the building. So most of our residents have been vaccinated. However, we have a few flu cases, and we're monitoring some of our residents. Our per DM pool continues to grow. We will bring in two additional per DM employees. So a testament to Autumn and how great she is. Our per DM pool has grown to seven employees over the past three months, which is really great for us. And then we are putting one of our LNA's through an MNA program. She starts on Monday, which is really great for us. So that will allow us to continue to step back from agency use over for us, which the ultimate goal for myself and Lauren Hayward, who is our wellness coordinator. The goal is to have agency completely out of assisted living by the end of this year, which we're really trending towards. So those are the.
That's great. And, you know, our assisted living side of things is actually a moneymaker, which is outstanding. And you mentioned we have eighteen on the waiting. This is too bad we didn't have a little bit more room.
I know.
To accept them. And it's just a testament to the work that's being done. So, good job.
We do have, I think our matrix right now, forty-seven residents. I believe thirty-five of them are private pay, which is pretty high. Of the eighteen people who are on our waitlist, thirteen of those individuals are private pay residents.
Awesome.
So we have a huge word of mouth. We have a lot of residents who are pretty active in the community. We have several residents who have vehicles, which is kind of new for us over the past few years over in assisted living. So they're out in the community, and we're getting lots of word of mouth referrals, which is great.
Keep up the great job. Mr. James?
You'd be the one, you'd be the one car that used to.
Chuck and I remember when the cows were lined up in the front when we came here.
And then there was like only one.
Then it went out.
Long time, there's only one by the, right by the crosswalk.
Well, the word of mouth, word of mouth getting out, yeah, it was great. Jason?
All right. Let's see. We had a business review with Health Pro Heritage, who is our therapy service company. They also manage our restorative program and also our wellness programming over in assisted living. During that business review, we have identified lots of great outcomes, statistical data, daily rate, patient stays. So everything is progressing forward. So they've been a great business partner for us, and we continue to look forward to working with them. We are continuing to work with Creative, which is our marketing company to enhance our website. So there's been some enhancements, some changes on our website. So you'll see font change, different color schemes. So there's been some, some new initiatives on the website, if you want to take a look at them. The employee newsletter for March has been published and is out. I included that in my board report. As Chuck mentioned, we are working on our budget, getting everything prepared and ready for that. A lot of our work for the past month has been around the joint committee, getting everything ready and prepared for our audit that we'll be having in September. So that will consist of the nursing home assisted living. And we've added an additional certification for our dedicated memory care neighborhood. So hopefully, that will be on track for their audit sometime in September, unannounced. I provided you this morning with Dr. Singer's retirement notification for May second, from twelve to one. It says retirement celebration. So you're all welcome to participate. And then also this week, we met with Grant, with Grant. We talked about the grant with Chuck. I've called you two to give this.
Not, not really. And with Allison to talk about the grant, which was approved by the
executive council.
Yes, yesterday.
And so that's all good to go. Internally, we're working on process. We're working on personnel. We're also looking at computer system to manage everything so that the case manager and the program coordinator is able to document everything for reporting, reporting purposes that are due every quarter to the state. So we're working on those initiatives right now, and hopefully everything will be rolled out here very quickly. We do have a meeting set up with the two adult day programs, just to educate them and give them information. And so there's collaboration, and so that there is communication built on what they need, how we can service them appropriately, how the marketing is going to work, how the paperwork, all of the internal happening. So we're going to come with that, but just, that's the update. So thank you.
Just on that same note, the, that pilot program, Counselor Stevens did call me and let me know they were rolling on it yesterday, which is great. And gave me an opportunity to read some of that stuff, the pilot program in detail. And I prefer to read it again, but I bought it. Said that we, they're looking for us to have three adult daycare programs in the county. Did you see that?
So that was original application, but we did reach back out to the DTS and told them that, well, one. So that was original application, but we did reach back out to DTHS and told them that, well, one of them closed its doors.
Right.
So we're down to two.
Okay.
So that, that was, there was communication back to DTHS that, you know, the grant writer reached out to the contacts.
The only reason why I bring that up is, um, former Commissioner Tom Morello mentioned to me at one time that the woman that ran, and I forget the name of it, I'm gonna apologize, in Hampstead.
Senior pass.
Right, so she, when she, I guess, sold it, uh, she's signing, now I compete, but now that that company went out of business, she was contemplating bringing it back. So maybe we reach out to, uh, former Commissioner Tom Morello to see if he talked to her and see if she has plans on bringing it back.
What I do hear is there's a grassroots effort to restore that. And so I believe the employees, the previous employees are working to develop a new business.
Okay, is that something that this program can help them?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Good. Nice, perfect.
And, and just as a qualifying point of view with this, it's those individuals that are duly certified with Medicare and Medicaid that will be eligible for the program.
Very good. Great. Thanks, Jay. Um, I'm gonna go to new business or, new business, old business.
Um, got a discussion. I've made aware that, uh, we've gotten an Aqua Grant application from the Fundary Presbyterian Church. I haven't seen it. There's just two things regarding that. First, if we still have up on the website that there are grants available and we're not going to uh, offer any grant, we should probably take that link down, so that we're not encouraging people to apply.
It does say that the due date is December thirty of twenty twenty-three.
Geez, okay, so the due date is passed, so.
But the point, the point being is.
This, this company, this organization applied, we haven't reviewed. So I, I, I haven't seen it. I don't even know what they're asking for. I just know that they've spent a lot of time putting an application together. And I know our sentiment is, you know, maybe low on approving it, but they've done it. We should review it and decide whether it's, and, and then cut it off if that's what we're doing.
It'll be on the agenda for next week, and they actually applied in December.
Oh, they, they did. Okay.
Do we have.
So before the deadline.
Yes.
Do we have any open applications besides that?
No, I've been, whenever I had received something, I would ask Emily to, to forward it on. I think what happened was all the work was on the save it down, but didn't get forwarded on.
I mean, I don't, I personally don't want to try to eat those, um, those line items entirely. Like, I would like to keep some in reserve, and I'm not saying we have to, I, I think it makes sense to just continue advertising at this point. But there, we could, I could anticipate a situation where there might be some organizations, we don't have to leave a huge pool of money in, but just leave a small reserve in case there's a few more organizations we want.
I, I agree. But do, do, how much do they ask for? I don't even know.
It's gonna be on the agenda next week. So we'll take out that one. Yes, exactly.
Do we think they, they ask for new ones?
Do we should leave that up on the website or?
I think we should take it down from the website currently, but I think because that deadline has passed. And then if we want to do a renewed, um, promotion on the website to say, hey, you know, but let's wait and figure out what money we're moving, how much we want to keep some of those things. It was a great, uh, I had the meeting discussing the, um, our allocations last week was very good. Maybe we can, after we get some more clarity on what we can move, some building clarity, then maybe we can go back through and see how much, you know, go through the specifics of what we want to move where and when.
Okay. I agree. So for now, let's take it down. Then we'll put it back up if we decide.
Exactly.
Allison?
I just wanted to apply support that next on the March twenty-first agenda. The, for the FY twenty-five budget, the regrades, repurposed, status changes, new positions. Those will all come before you from the various departments that have contacted me. Um, Chuck and I are working, he's gonna be working on the financials. I've gotten all the paperwork finally created and finishing up the last few between Friday and Monday morning, and I should have everything prepared. It's just in time so that it can, if it's approved, it gets into the department budgets, Chuck can put it in. So just be aware that that's coming.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, any other new business? Old business?
Kind of heading back to that application, I just rea-realized. I, I'm, I'd like it to not be reviewed next week, but the week after, because next week I won't be here.
Are you gonna, will you be zooming?
I, maybe. It's, it's really what I'm up in the air. I don't know if I'm gonna be available. I will zoom if I can, but I may not be able to.
Why don't we just keep it on the agenda? If you don't, if you're, if it turns out that you're not available at all, then we'll just table it.
Okay.
It's, yeah, just because if you're here, you might as well take it up.
Right, well, I won't be physically here.
No, sure. No, no, no.
But I may be able to zoom.
If you're zooming, then.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
All right, anything else? Or close that part of them? No? But we have a Gallagher benefit at nine thirty, which is not, we have another twenty-five minutes yet, but let's go to public comment. First, let's take care of that. I don't think there's anybody from the public, but if anyone from the public is out there, now is the time to speak. Let's see the bodies, so we can move on to that.
I, I may have one with Jason and Chuck. I just realized, just, I probably should bring it forward, because it may impact the budget.
Okay, so I'm gonna say this, if you're interested in, um, seeing the Gallagher, uh, presentation, we're gonna go into non-public briefly now, and then you can come back to watch the Gallagher benefit presentation if you'd like. So with that, I'm gonna enter the motion.
To enter into non-public, first we need to ninety-one A call.
Sorry. May, seconded, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great, thank Patty today.
We have just come out of non-public and we're back in public session, and I moved to seal the minutes indefinitely, because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Sir. Both have been made and seconded. Any discussion? No, no discussion. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
What should I go to?
Yes.
I vote no.
You don't want to seal the votes?
I don't. This is a conversation that should, the public should know about, if we're dealing with money. But anyway, I, you guys won't be on the way, so it's, it is what it is. But, all right, do we have anything else? No.
Uh, I guess we'll just take a break, talk Gallagher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, uh, chatted with, um, oh, did you want me to, uh, rent out that?
Yeah, yeah, nicely.
Yeah, too. She, she's looking to be able to get her.
We had a good conversation.
We're gonna pour the.
She's used to a higher volume.
Yeah, yes. I can.
I don't know if anybody, if anybody, I'm gonna just grab a little, is anybody looking anything?
Oh, thank you.
Good, thank you.
She told that she was.
Yeah.
From somebody else, but I'm not fellow switcher. The word came back to me that.
I hate working from home. In a red and brown, the two screens and the font, the rest is not sharp.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too, Ryan. Sir?
This will be for looking at our, um, benefit renewal as far as budgetary as well, so, um, thoughts? Yeah, so I'll leave it to Ryan again.
All right, all right.
Well, we have plenty of in, uh, information here. You already saw the slides, I'm assuming. So, uh, we can kind of take you through the highlights and then, you know, if you want to go over some details, we'll, we'll show you backup. Uh, sorry, I'm gonna turn it over to you, because you did so much of the work there, so.
No, no, no.
I want to steal your thunder.
Yeah, so thanks for taking some time this morning. Um, like we mentioned, we can make this go as fast as you want or as slow as you want to, but, um.
You guys take your time, whatever you feel is comfortable.
Perfect.
We don't have anything else on our agenda.
Okay, oh, you're finishing with us, okay. All right, very good. So, you know, Allison probably approached the subject already, but just to kind of, and Kate already mentioned it, it's been a tough claim year. Um, even for the eighteen months, give or take, for claims with you guys, meaning when I say you guys, meaning Rockingham in general, the folks that are, employees that are on the plan, and then obviously, um, the key element is spouses and children, right? This, when we look at how large losses, it's a lot of spouses that are sick. Um, and there's some big, big time claims, specifically one, and when you have two hundred and fifty, so, give or take, on the plan, the medical plan, give or take, um, or two sixty-five, you know, one that's large, it's, it can make a, make a big difference. So on page, uh, three.
That's what we.
Yeah, what we try to look at, yeah, there's two, there's really one number you want to pay attention to here. What we try to do, let's roll up from the bottom. So the bottom bucket is voluntary coverage, right? We'll do the easy part first. If you can see in the second to last column, just about everything's a zero. Meaning what we try to do is most of the lines of coverage were up for renewal, so we tried to get flat renewals, which is actually kind of a tough beat these days. Everybody's looking, I mean, carriers are looking for in, increases, because of cost of business. What we're trying to do though is, for you guys, limit that to zeros. Now, there is one blip on the Amwin's retiree medical, about twenty-six K with the retirees. We're working to kind of negotiate that down, and we also have an alternative bid on that. So I don't want that twenty-six thousand K to stick out too, too much, but it is there. And then if you roll up to the box above, actually. Yeah, this is your board coverage, right? This is where, this is fixed costs. This is probably Chuck's favorite area, right? This is where I can, fixed costs versus variable is the claims, right? So in the fixed costs, what we try to do is, again, going from the bottom up, Kate, um, most of the zeros, the ancillary coverage, the, the life and the LTD and stuff like that, all zeros. There's a little bit of a bump on dental, all right, and that's just for pure claims. We're projecting about, oh, twenty-three K in claims. Dental's a little bit more predictable. The admin fee is staying the same there. And then, um, the doorstopper basically is really the medical. Again, this is worst case scenario. We have another projection that kind of owns it a little bit. I think it can, we think it can be a little bit tighter than that, but that's your claims, it's pharmacy, medical, it's stop loss and admin, okay?
What did?
Well, what's up with one point four million dollars excess from what we did previously?
Yeah, so we'll get to that, sir. The, um, that's basically claims. I'm gonna walk through the fixed costs, because a lot of that increase is minimal. Uh, though the stop loss, it has a bump because of a large loss, so I'll get to that.
So is that where, is it coming out of stop loss mostly?
That's the biggest piece. So that came in at fifty-two percent. Uh, however, we had negotiated a rate cap last year with HM, so it's fifty.
Yeah.
Um, we've gone, you know, when we saw that number come out, we immediately went to market. So we're looking at alternatives. We already have an alternative for you. We're gonna look at the specific stop loss level two, currently one fifty. I think it's probably time to move it up to like one seventy.
No kidding.
And just to give you another, you know, this is a worst case scenario. Usually we do not lock in stop loss for another couple of months, so we will probably get at least one more month of data. So that'll help our projection. That could also help the stop loss as well.
If we're, if we're on the descent, which it just seems like we should, because that, that huge claim was last summer.
Correct.
And that was like the heart transplant or something like that.
And you had another big one that's no, no longer on the plan, so that's a good thing too. But, you know, this is, this looks grim, obviously. We're, we're gonna tighten it up, it'll get a little bit better, but this is a worst case scenario. This is no plan design changes. This is, you know, and there's some good news in this too, that we haven't touched upon. So, uh, when we get to the, yeah, when we get to the, uh, the actual ASO, so administrative services only through Cigna, we up for negotiation this year. We, we'd have some good things with regard to prescription drug rebates and some wellness and stuff like that, so.
Sorry, Brian. No, 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 sorry, it's a team review. So on the admin on the medical, page four, just historically, since Cigna's been in place since twenty sixteen, there's been no increase on the admin. Okay, so there is a slight increase this year, if you look at page, um, five. Okay, it's a three-year deal with Cigna on this thing. You know, again, they, they run the medical and the pharmacy plans. But a year one, basically, the next coming renewal, it's about a three percent increase, which is about thirty-seven hundred bucks annually. And then year two is another one percent on top of that, and year three is a one percent. So that's about fifty-six hundred dollars, give or take, um, which is actually really good. Now again, I know you guys looking at, we haven't had an increase in that, it's a little bit of a bump, but most clients are getting at least three or four a year, right? So I think if you have a very good partner with Cigna, A, um, the nice little item here is usually they give you twenty grand for, for wellness, right, which helps with the gym and, and all that good stuff. Um, they bumped it up to twenty-five.
So we're getting it back in some way.
Pretty much. It's almost a whole increase right there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a push. We'll take it.
Yeah, absolutely. And then probably the number one more positive thing that's come out of the renewal, so, um, is really the, the RX rebates for pharmacy. We'll get to a number in a second, but right now, so again, it's a three-year program. Overtime carriers used to have zero percent share with, um, employee groups on RX rebates, but that's changed over the last couple of years. So the prior, uh, three-year contract was, they would share twenty-five percent year one and fifty, year two and three. So we've been able to work that up to seventy-five percent. What does that mean? So the current paid RX rebate was about a hundred and six thousand. So that you can, that goes back into the plan as a negative number and brings the, the overall budget down. So luckily, we got up to seventy-five percent, which on average is about three hundred and forty-three, three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and forty-five thousand. So that's a big bump that's gonna help on the overall costs.
I did ask them to go out, because we had talked again about carving out the pharmacy, because, uh, your group has it and stuff like that, but Cigna will not carve that out.
Yeah, so just a little background on this. So Cigna thinks that this account could be at risk for them. We didn't tell them that, we didn't tell them that we weren't marketing, even though we're really not marketing. We did have a conversation with them a couple of months ago and said, look, it, the group is very concerned about prescription drug costs and the rebate programs and stuff like that. So they'd like us to explore carving it out. Cigna won't let, let you carve it out because of the size of your group. So I said, well, you know, Anthem will allow that, even though I know you don't want to move to Anthem right now. So we used it as a leveraging tool, um, and they, they really did sweeten the pot. So, you know, an extra couple hundred thousand dollars in prescription drug rebates is coming your way, which is good. Uh, but they're, they're holding out that this is going to stop you from going to market, even though we're really not planning to take you to market, unless you want it to.
Is that three hundred and four, four thousand, three-year total or annual total?
Annual.
Yeah.
Okay, either one of them.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it estimate.
Sounds even bigger, right? You get dollars if you want to convert to one to six.
Absolutely. The estimate is about three hundred and forty-three, one thousand each of those three years. I could go up and down a little bit, but that's money that goes right back into you guys. So that, that helps, that's a big help. So page six is the stop loss. So this is where we're asked here about the, um, where the costs are coming. The chunky this is, of that one point four million of original pages from stop loss. If you really look at the bottom line, um, you can see the dollar difference. HM's a preferred A-plus rated carrier. They have a great part, and you get a very strong contract, right? So those are all good things. That's what you want with stop loss. But if you look at the bottom, right now, an annual premium, give or take, right, it's about six hundred and eighty-two thousand for the year. It's gonna go up to about one mil, if you didn't do anything on the as-is, current plan. So three hundred and twenty-six thousand, give or take, that's, that's a piece of that big fat number that we looked at in the beginning, okay? So a couple of things on the stop loss. Certainly we want to, I think we want to consider at least moving up to one sixty or one seventy for ISF. What does that mean? Right now, you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible, uh, for, for some of the large losses, right? So do we increase it to one sixty? What happens when you, Rockingham takes a little more risk, up to one sixty or one seventy? Then the clock, the carrier tries to discount the rating a little bit, okay? This all comes back to, well, it's like the weather, predicting how our claim's gonna go, you know, you're gonna have one, two, three.
Certainly gonna have, really.
So, um, you know, you can see it drops, you know, let's say, what, forty-eight percent, down to forty-one percent, and even down to thirty-four overall. You went to this one sixty, one seventy, now.
Yeah, so I mean, if you look at that difference, uh, if you kept things at, as you're saying, at a three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar increase, if you move the spec to one seventy, you're looking at two thirty-two. So that's a delta of ninety-three thousand dollars. If you move the spec to one seventy, you're looking at two thirty-two. So that's a delta of ninety-three thousand dollars. So in essence, if you have five claims that hit that one seventy, that's when it becomes a bad move for you. So if you have five or six. Right, that's the trigger point, five claims basically. So, you know, historically, we, we're not seeing five claims out of your population that are gonna hit a hundred and seventy. So we think that this is a good bet for you to do that.
Do you know how long we've been on one fifty?
Wow.
Oh.
Probably since five.
Five, at least five years.
We had some less, we had some lesser ones.
Yeah.
Like one twenty-five, I think before.
Yeah.
It's been about five years because I think it was the last um.
I don't know if it was last year or the year before. We were, we were very close to, to moving it, but the numbers didn't quite make sense. Um, so we left it.
But this year we have six. At the one fifty. But you, well, I'm, if you even met out, so maybe you pull out two.
Yeah.
But we're not just looking at, we have a number more months to go than if you, we're at four.
One's dropped off.
Again, this is a, this is a, this is a bad run. We, historically, we do not see this. You know, we're gonna expect three.
Right, and that has been the typical, and that's why we knew uh, two years ago, when two of these, one of the claims came out a year and a half ago, we knew. And this first claim is not going away. They will be here.
Which the first.
One is gonna stay main on this claim.
The, I'm sorry, it's the one from July or?
If you go to page sixteen. Uh, I'm looking at page sixteen and I'll identify.
Oh, yeah, that one.
Page sixteen, that is staying with you and that's your highest claim.
Right, that's the one that was the, in August, was a million dollars.
The other one, number two, probably will remain on because it's a spouse as well. Um, I expect that one to stay on too. The third one has dropped off. And then we're getting back into, you know, right around a hundred and thirty-one and going down. No, but your first one.
Yeah, that's, I.
I look at it electronically. It's a little easier to read. The first one, um, that one's gonna be looked at by the stock loss carriers no matter what because they have not had transplant. Uh, they have not. So that is pending.
Oh, that still has, oh, that's, you haven't incurred that yet.
You have incurred those costs. You have to get to this point, but they are a, they're on a hot.
And there's more?
They're on a hot transplant list.
Now, whether they get to that.
Point or not, we don't know.
And then it's much more?
For a transplant, yeah, you'll end up again back into a million dollar bracket.
They're gonna, that's gonna be hard for you.
I would expect.
Uh, the question I have.
That's a spouse.
Yeah, but it.
On the deductible, should we consider raising it more than, I mean, we're not raising it at all in the first uh, year, right?
Yeah, typically, we don't really move it more than, say, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Well, we're keeping it at one fifty.
Right, so I mean, if we do move it, usually we move it in increments of, say, twenty, twenty-five thousand.
These are options.
Right.
Oh, I thought they were year one too.
No, we're talking about moving to one seventy and that we would keep that over the year.
Yeah, so is one seventy adequate?
Yeah.
I mean, what if we put two hundred? Um, I mean, I don't know how the math works, that's what I'm getting at.
That was, that goes to the point of what's the tipping point of the number of claims, right?
Yeah.
And so what they're saying is they think we'll have maybe three or four, which keeps us at one seventy in a good place. Whereas if we, but if we have five or six.
Yeah, you wanna.
That's the risk.
You wanna save that for actually further down the road. So I mean, as medical trend keeps increasing, you know, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar claim is now a hundred and seventy thousand dollar claim.
So you're recommending the one seventy, that's pretty much what?
We are. Yeah, and we're gonna have some other options.
Scott and I talked about that too, because you're back to our records and it's appropriately staged.
Yeah, it's, it's a great question because it's almost like you're trying to massage and play the game just right. You could claw it to it and get more premiums, but the concern is you're still gonna have a bunch. Yeah, right, and yeah, so if we go from one fifty to one seventy, that's a little bit of move, get a little bit of break on premium, it shouldn't work.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna talk a little bit further. We just got an updated quote that came in from Cigna. So at a hundred and seventy thousand dollar spec level, we got it down another forty-three thousand. So we're, we're gonna go back to HM now. We still have some more marketing, but I mean, I would like to keep with HM if we can get things pretty close to that number. Because, you know, they lost, they lost a lot of money on you guys for the last couple of years, but uh, they've been a good partner. So if you remember last year, they came in with a much higher number.
Right.
And we were able to negotiate it down. So they were really good partner, even though they lost their shirt this year. Um, so if we can get it, we don't wanna leave money on the table, obviously, but if we can keep HM in the ballpark of where that Cigna quote is, all things being equal, we would recommend you stay with them.
Um, sometimes we talked, you know, being the broker side of things, if you jump, you've had a bad year. And you jump and you go, and then you have another bad year, and you wanna go back to.
Yeah, limit your options.
Really limit.
Yeah, you can't go back.
They're, they're weathering it with us right now, so if.
So we should stick with them because they're.
They're recommending.
If we can get it to that, you know, that same number, pretty close to that.
Yeah.
So, you know, now we're looking at a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar savings off of, you know, that one point four that we started at.
Right.
Plus, we, you know, we talk about the rebates also coming in and stuff like that too, so.
So that.
It, it looks ugly that first page. It's gonna get a little better.
Yeah, so that's how we like to start.
It's bad news, huh?
Yeah, we can work our way in, you know?
Just a curiosity question, because we do self-insured insurance excess for workers' comp. There's only two players left in that game. There have only been two for a while.
Yep.
Um, you know, safety national and then Midwest employees.
Yep.
Or employers casually. Is there, so this is the problem I've had on excess workers' comp loss. On that one, we like to go to a much higher individual spec, but they have this minimum premium that they wanna lock in at.
Yeah.
Is there such a thing or, or not as much on the medical stuff?
No, so, you know, as Brian was talking about.
This is a curiosity question.
You'll see a slice point. So you, you know, when we start to look at the decrements to moving to a higher stock loss level, you're gonna see where it makes sense and where it doesn't make sense. So if we, let's just say we bumped it to one ninety or two hundred thousand. That savings probably isn't gonna be adequate enough for you to do it all at once.
Right.
But if you break it up into, let's just say we're here in two more years or three more years down the road, there's time to move that spec again. And you can see that you'll get the more value for it at that point.
Would it also probably be more? I'm sorry, sir. How often do we have an opportunity to make that move?
You can make it every year. But generally, we'll look at it usually two to three years, you know? If you're performing well, but, and there's no need to move it, that's fine. But you can see where, you know, everything is starting to, to cost so much more.
Right, I, I just wondered because sometimes like if you're, because we've been, we thought we're hopefully at the top, and it's not, so it's going up. So if we're going down.
Yeah, I think next year will be a better year.
I can just get that sense of, you know, just whatever, you know, you're just.
With, in theory, in theory, like say we start going down on the overall claims thing. Wouldn't that be the time to actually see renewal at a higher?
You could, I, I mean.
Because if we get sure that the risk of being the higher one isn't really there, we can maybe get through it, but you're like, I'm just. Anyways.
I, I like to tie it to the renewal of the stock loss. So like, if you don't need it, like, let's just say you get a good renewal. If you don't need to move that spec level, then don't move.
As we have good history anyways, renewing at the individual spec level, there'll be a reduction rates anyways.
Correct.
Yeah, we can kinda.
More minimal.
And we can kinda trend based on spouses.
We're trying to rein it in, guys, so we can all pay attention to one conversation. It's like five conversations along that.
Sure, sorry.
Um, on page eight.
Yes.
It says that specifically stock loss level of the one forty since twenty fourteen, so maybe ten years.
Yeah.
Not right.
Yeah, it's been a while. Been a while.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my question that I had, but.
Yeah.
You know, cause I was sort of kinda interested, I, I was thinking the same align with missionary God do. So like, what if you bump that until what would that be, you know? And I wanted to hear that response.
So, you know, we, we can get you a quote uh, for one ninety, but like I said, I, I think that seventy is prob, one seventy is probably the number that you wanna look at. We'll show you everything.
Yeah, I'm thinking like inflationary numbers over the last five years have been like seventeen percent. So what is that, one, that one fifty, ten years ago is not the same as.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, that's.
I'd, so I don't, I wasn't here in fourteen, two thousand fourteen, but that number seems a little bit high to me back in two thousand fourteen.
Right, and that's where my thinking is, is like, it's not the same, even though it's the same dollar, it's not the same purchasing power thing. Inflation has been outrageous over the last five years, so.
So this will help you, I think. I, I know exactly who you're getting at, right? Look, the, the one fifty back in twenty fourteen could be the two hundred today, right? So one of the things we look at is, is benchmarking with groups your size. Um, uh, membership wise on medical plan, and then we look at, you know, Kate, as far as, you know, estimated number of large losses. So the spec level right now for you guys, on average, about, about a hundred and sixty-five, hundred and seventy. Make national for our benchmark report. So that's, I wanted to add that in there that, you know, that's why I think we, we, at least go to that, right? We can always get two hundred and try to get some more premium, you know, we will have more premium savings now. One thing in here, I just wanted, uh, Allison had mentioned it, is so we, we did go to market on the stock loss. It is a one year, right? What we're trying to do is, it's crazy, that fifty percent rate cap year two actually helped. You know, um, you would think that number was crazy, but that's how, so every instant contract every year, we can get in and out of it. Cigna's, they provide like a, like a little bit of savings. And what I find interesting with that, we do, is that them must, they see the claims before anybody. I, that's why I say it's a slow, carries is a hard right. I, I think it's a, it's a slow right, but I think, you know, again, that one claimant, that one's, gosh, that could play out, but it's gonna be high. I think they see a little light on the end of the tunnel. It's, now, to back this up, it's, they're rating it some savings, but it's still within HM's range, right? We also have six other carriers so far they're looking at and they keep calling and saying, I don't know if we wanna take a run at this group. So if anything, all the carriers are seeing kind of the same thing. That's what helps when we have benchmarks like that, right? Is, and there's always gonna be one that says, we'll save you a bunch of money, and then that one makes me nervous, because it might be dying a business. So I think we have some opportunity to help on the cost and the stock loss. Um, and I think probably one seventy is um.
Probably the right number.
The right, the recommended move, yeah.
Comfortable with the two based on looking at your claimants there and how they're trending based on, you know, the diagnosis, you can kind of get a sense. I don't believe those bottom ones are gonna move much more than four or five are gonna move too far much, you know, farther out of that, maybe, maybe twenty-five, maybe thousand dollars more maybe potentially, but um, I, I think for what it is, I think it'll be under control, you know, on those kind of illnesses.
I remember the discussion during COVID, a lot of people elected to not go defer, right? And so we had that build up, and now we're like five years out.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't think that, I mean, how does that play out? Is it gonna have people doing more?
Um, no, I think things are starting to catch up a little bit to where they were. Um, just to let you know, you guys are not the only fifty percent stock loss that I've seen this year. I, I, I've had two of them like this. So it, it's, it's cyclical.
We thought last year we might get it, but we were watching it, you know, based on the stuff that was coming in, and I was saying, we're watching. And I knew this would be probably the year that it was gonna hit. It has hit, it's come through, but on the other side, you've got one off. Um, and then, you know, a couple of these, majority of these espouses, so.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I've been here three years now. And it almost seems like it's, if each year gets a little bit worse. It's much going.
It could be because of the demographics, the age, factors and all that.
It runs the roller coaster, right?
Yeah.
You go, it kinda, it plateaus and then it kinda streamlines along again, and then it plateaus. That's what I've seen over my.
Yeah, our new population's a little bit on the older side, you know?
We're just on the longer.
We're on the longer.
Board climb still.
Right.
But normally it wouldn't be this long.
Right.
You leave all younger employees.
We do. We all do.
It's just a workforce, meaning, there's some, sure, you have some highs in there, but same folks and they all get a little older, right? Um, that, A, the other thing about COVID, yeah, it, we're kind of getting away from it. The problem that happened then is people opted out of seeing a doctor. So, you know, something was detected a couple of years ago. How you going now, like, whoa, I have like a major problem, happens with dental too. That, there's still a little bit of that happening and, and I couldn't pinpoint on your utilization, but just in general. You've seen that, almost like that lag almost.
I didn't know if that's starting to dissipate because five years, like, like most people.
Two years after COVID, probably want to get, this is a knee problem or.
Yeah, I talked about that yesterday because on the dental claims, we'll start to see that slide off now. Because some, you know, I also said somebody has two root canals and a crown or whatever. They're doing one year, they're holding off to the second year for replenishing of that. So I think you're gonna start to see that level up. I also think we have over a hundred and twenty plus in the nursing home openings.
Yeah.
That we don't have, like you're talking about, that staffing level coming in at a different age bracket that could help us. That, that impacts us, all those openings on our health plan because they're so vast.
Pan is a bigger workforce.
At least we have a positive inflow of younger individuals, but it's from the department of patients. So hopefully, see that as a fact, you gotta look at, especially if you're twenty-five four and.
Yeah.
End up twenty-four and then twenty-five.
I'm starting to think you're off.
No, you're, it's all in the same realm. And it's not like when you put the new hire out there, it's like, you know, age twenty-five and below. Anybody above them, no need to apply, really can't do that. I'm saying that sarcastically, but if you could get some young folks saying, sure. Um, get this thing on point. Uh, page seven, this is really kind of the commentary with HM. Like, we try to look at last year this time and, you know, and today. So loss ratio is premium versus claims. Now, last year, we ran a little bit better at eighty-four percent. Right now, you're a hundred and eighty-two. Hundred percent is the bar, right? You have below a hundred percent is considered favorable as you go down. Above, not favorable. It's projected to even be about two hundred, give or take by the end. So that's why this time last year, we're looking at twenty, you know, twenty-five percent increase. This year, it came out of fifty-two, but luckily that cap hit fifty. Now, again, we think we we might be able to get that a little bit better because of the marketing going on, but last year, we ended at seventeen and a half. And really the concerns are, this is just again, give you a ten thousand foot level. They had one claimant last year they worried about, which we knew. This year, there's still three. And that's a big jump, but the reimbursements, you know, six hundred and twenty-eight K came back to you last year. It's gonna be even more coming year.
So quick question. That big, that one claimant, sorry, Chuck, that one claimant that's the big one, has it gone? Holy shit, what have you done?
For, well, for their claim, like, last year they did, but don't forget those claims are still hitting. Um, and will hit through. That's why you'll be looking at March to see if there's any additional. And then I'm sure they're still under care.
In a way, you, did you, did I hear you say that they're waiting for transplant?
I think they.
They're on the list for transplant, yeah. Now, whether they get to that point or not.
Right, right. And I don't know the factors that, that I wanna know.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing that, but.
But they're still under our plan. They're still receiving care. They'll still be on that list. And obviously, maybe their health is compromised, so they're gonna be continuing to seek care. I don't know. Or they're stabilized and they're just waiting and, and that's it.
I mean, that's, it is what it is. All right, I'm just trying to get a picture of that.
That's, I think, what I'm hearing from you guys.
Yeah, right, correct. I think too, the hope, if they do get a transplant, it goes well.
Yeah.
And they settle, settle down, you know, that's kind of, that's the, that's the hope, right? Um, so.
For their wellness as well as for our ball, and start a family as well.
Yeah, so, but it's, it's a big one that's just there.
I was just trying to understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but we don't know if like, for instance, you said there's three. Could there be, is there other individuals on here that could have, could be on here for uh, different, the same individual for multiple diagnoses go for the stock loss?
Um, uh, no, so usually what that, Kate, what happens there is they do it by dollar.
Okay.
So some of these people could have multiple diagnosis, right? It could be where they have, say, cancer, and then they have um, like an IBS problem or something like that. So what leads the, the charge is the dollars.
For that one claimant.
Yeah, and so that's what shows up here.
So when a long time says one claimant, it's a per person, not a per issue?
It's a per person.
Per person, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly. I just wanted to know, point on how many claim, like, are these all, when we look at the high?
The first thing you talk about there.
Ten claimants.
Yeah, they, that, that number one claimant's got a lot of problems going on.
Yeah.
But they just, there's that one.
Yeah, and that's a thing, absolutely, it always seems to be, you know, someone's maybe diabetic, then there's a weight issue, then there's a medication, you know? There's all these.
Good analogy of, 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 of diabetes, well, it's a many different, other than.
The other element, Allison talked about, while we're on. The other element, Allison talked about while we're on page sixteen, is. A lot of these folks are spouses. So it, it's, I wouldn't say abnormal, but just about all of them are, and so it's just something to be aware of, right? Really, there's a, there's a mix. It's just, it's just, I guess, an interest point. Um, it's really nothing you can target or do or anything here, it's just a matter of, is a lot of spouses on the plan? Um, the only thing is, if you ever wanted to put in, you know, this is a whole nother idea, but Allison brought up. Like a spousal surcharge. And that's a, that's more of a, um, lapse of words. Yeah, exactly, whether you really want to do that or not. Yeah, and.
Have you seen that at all?
We talked about it years ago.
I'm just unfamiliar.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very common.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, spousal surcharges, smoker surcharges.
And what do those look like, the surcharges?
So, they could be as much as a thousand dollars a year, you know, they're usually at least five hundred a year, six hundred a year.
We set the rates on that.
Yeah.
We would set the rates.
I'd be interested in looking at that, just to offset some of that.
Collectively, when I came on board, um, we talked about that with the previous two commissioners groups. We wanted to see how we were trending medically. That's, it's always been a consideration. And that is, I just brought it up this year, and just in, in philosophy saying, wait, when I'm looking at this chart. If you take that one termed off, everybody's a spouse here with the exception of one.
And that's.
That's a lot.
That's probably unusual, a lot of things.
It's.
It's a little bit.
This is a little bit higher than the norm, but on almost every claim chart that I look at, spouses and dependents.
Are high.
Are higher than the employee, the actual employee, and the only reason that we get from analytics on this is that, well, the employee we know is working. The other, the spouse may not be working, may just be sick, and that's why these claims are hitting that way.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
It's, but it's almost always that the spouses generate more claims than your actual employees. It's almost all the time. This is higher, much higher, but.
It's this teeter totter of morale. And that's what I keep going back to.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to retain our employees? Um, do we want to get into that? And I've always leaned more towards morale and being goodwill and trying to get them into wellness programs. They put their annuals done, to motivate me, pushing that.
Now, on that same topic, Allison, because now you got me, my brain working here. The wellness stuff, obviously, we're not doing anything with the spouses on the wellness.
Yes, we are.
We are, okay.
Yeah, we really, we've, uh, we carved that out again and made some, um, enhanced dollar values under the spouses. For like the prostate cancer, some of the other tags, because we get information, not specifically, just get in general. These are the things that we're getting tagged for in our claims. So we work to motivate me and you guys in that programming to kind of enhance those dollar values, so. Instead of spouses not having the prostate cancer, they can get two hundred dollars versus fifty. That's an enhancement for them to kind of entice them, hey, have that annual, and you're gonna get two hundred dollars back in your pocket. Right, pro collectives versus remedial. Yeah. That's, the sooner they have those general health conditions, those underlying health conditions where they're not being seen at all. They pop up in those annual exams, so they're ahead of the wave and getting treatment. It's not all of a sudden, I'm not feeling good, I've banged out, I'm in the emergency room, and now I've discovered I have prostate cancer and I have this and that.
The question is, how many people have, you know, it'd be good to know the data, maybe we have this. How many people were actually servicing with family plans, either spouse or, or family plans? Because even at a thousand bucks, like, how much money can we improve from this five hundred or a thousand? And is that return ROI sufficient to offset the depreciation and morale?
Well, so let me give you another, uh, take on, on the spousal surcharge. So it sounds good in theory, right?
Yeah.
There's some unintended consequence that a lot of people don't kind of think of. Let's just say that Allison and I are married, and.
Congratulations.
Right? Uh, I'm not retiring any day now. So, you know, we both are. So, in theory, we're gonna get hit with the spousal surcharge because we both have options to get coverage through our employer. Then you take an executive who is married, but maybe their spouse is not working. And they're not gonna get charged that spousal surcharge because, you know, the spouse doesn't work. That's really not equitable.
Yeah.
So really, you know, families that you need true incomes, again, hit with that surcharge. Whereas the more affluent couple is not.
Yeah, I'm, actually honestly, again, I'm looking at it from a taxpayer's point of view. So, here I am with large claims with spouses who are not working for the county, not affiliated with the county. And they're taking out the, well, as we see.
Yep.
They have the issue with the driver.
Yeah.
So it's costing everybody more money. And so I'm looking at it from that standpoint, from the taxpayer sitting at home.
So in, with that regard, I think something that would be more fair would be just to, in, uh, so.
Please.
You keep the contribution higher for the employee only coverage, and you just, you know, make it a little smaller for the family.
Well, that mean, that, that make it a lot difficult to.
It could be difficult to hire people, yeah.
Well, I, right, I understand that side of the, the argument.
Yeah.
And again, I'm looking at it from a certain standpoint.
COPD, um, has been a trending high for us too. We have a lot on that end. We talked about a smoker charge on that, but again, you have, you know, relatively speaking, and the nursing population historically. Is, so you have a lot of smokers in that segment of, of the workforce, they just do. So, and we need nurses here, and so, you know what I mean? It's, it's always looking at that balance, and it's a tough balance.
Now, it's funny that nurses smoke.
Demand on their feet and all the reporting and all of the stuff that they have to do, um, they sometimes can't eat. Um, because they're short staffed, so they're taking shorter breaks, it's, they.
You wouldn't think this, but, you know, we have a huge healthcare industry vertical that we do, they're the worst performing groups.
It makes sense.
Yeah, they work long hours, they stressful, they don't eat well, they smoke, a lot of them smoke. It's, they're really, uh, one of the poorer risk pools.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Just one last thing, we do have benchmarking on that, we can share, not right now, but yeah.
Yeah, just so we can look at.
Yeah, in the, in the snapshot on that, um, so I work, see, I support about twenty, twenty groups. One has a spousal surcharge, and it's about forty-five bucks, um, per biweekly paycheck.
So that boils off of what a year.
And so our, our company does it. We, you know, Gallagher does smoker surcharges, spousal surcharges, and I can tell you, they're not popular. You know, I mean, and, and for that very reason where the lower paid people are bearing the brunt of that a lot.
Yeah, right, it's definitely philosophy.
It's where the percentage increased in them.
Where we work, one of the ones is, they do that smoker surcharge. So they may either make you get a biometric screening outside your doc, or it's smoking sensation class. So I don't smoke, and I'm not going to get done outside my doctor's. I try to, I try to do, well, how many times a day do you smoke? And I say, I can't lie, you know, I just, you try, but they force. And that's what I'm getting at, like, it will be a forced event if you end up putting on a surcharge. And, and that's a philosophy, like, our, our guys, they don't care, and they just make you do it. And I, and I don't, I'm not happy, but I, I'm using myself as an example, because just be aware, I'm not talking about emotions, but if you put a surcharge, it'll be some of people.
It'll be the unintended consequences that we're gonna end up facing, and you can't call that from that. That is the biggest thing, Brian. You can't roll that back, so once it's out and it changes the dynamics, you never get on a better platform with the staff.
My concern is the nine million dollars we're spending on, um, outside care, uh, outside, uh, personnel.
Right.
And if, if we make, if we make it less.
Desirable.
Desirable to come to work at the county, we're gonna continue to, to have to pay those. Alienate potential employees and pay the, I don't know how much we're gonna budget next year. But, uh, you, you, you don't have a happy face. And so I'm, I'm concerned that we need to enhance, at least not right now, it's not the time to. To cut the benefits. This isn't, I, you know.
Yeah.
So, so on the, on the, just. We don't give the, um, travel nurses benefits, do we?
No.
So we either bring them in here, then they're going to get benefits, which.
They're.
Could bring up, derive more healthcare costs.
But, they're not gonna come here for.
We need the employees.
Yeah, they're not gonna come here for the wages, Brian, um, that, that's shown over the last three years, that they're not coming here for. Buying out of their contract to come here to work.
Yeah, wow.
So.
We.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is, there was, we, we did talk about one of your three plans and making some changes to it. So your richest plan design, which is the OAP, uh, ten percent. Um, if you look at the high dollar claims, there's, there's a lot of them on that plan.
What changes you want on?
Yeah, sixteen.
I'll see if I can make a special slide to the.
So, you know, we had talked about possibly sunsetting that plan.
Yeah.
Or making it, uh, more cost sharing into it. Because obviously, it's, it's not performing as well as the high deductible plans, just by the nature of it, the enrollment's a little bit smaller. If you're sick, you're gonna get on that plan because it's the better plan, or the best plan. So inherently, it's gonna perform more poorly than the other two plans. But that doesn't say that we can't make some adjustments to that plan, charge a little bit more. You know, uh, relatively speaking, so let's just say we're looking at a twenty-five percent increase across the board. Maybe make that one a thirty percent increase, and, and, you know, you're better performing high deductible, you don't apply that same amount to it.
Yeah, so this was a goal that I, uh, the previous two boards had, was we had four plans. We had the, when we decided to go with the high deductible plan, we had an OAP ten percent plan, and we had an OAP twenty percent plan. We sunsetted the twenty percent plan because we didn't want to do everything all at once and get everybody commotion and all of that. The plan was to sunset the ten percent, uh, the OAP ten percent plan. Um, but then COVID hit and different things were happening. But I asked to trend, and if you look on page twelve, you can see that, I asked them to go back and trend and let me know. Because I've known it, but I wanted to see it in, you know, color, black and white, but you can see how that plan has trended since twenty twenty. Um, you know, a hundred and eleven point two, a hundred and thirty-one, a hundred and eight, a hundred and twenty-one percent. It continues, uh, to stay in double, triple digit numbers. Um, we've recently gone up on the two thousand plan to a hundred and eleven and a hundred and eight, but it's not as bad as, uh, what we've trended. Over the previous years on that ten percent OAP. So I did ask them to make some plan design changes to that plan for consideration on page thirteen. Um, that would be, the deductible would go up. Um, it's currently at, for a family individual, a thousand, three thousand, and I wanted to bring it a little bit more in line to two thousand, four thousand. And then the co-insurance after the deductible, um, I, you know, it was only at ten percent, we're bringing, I asked for, you know, to bring it up a little to fifteen percent. Um, just so that that's out there, and then consider when we're doing our, um. Our premiums, uh, make a change in the premium raise for that.
How much, maybe I don't understand entirely, probably, it's like, it doesn't seem like essentially, it's gonna, it's almost like. It's really merging almost the two thousand high deductible in that, I mean, fundamentally, it's not that distinct now.
Well, the difference is that with the high deductible plans, everything applies to the deductible right out of the gate. With this plan, pharmacy would not.
Right.
So that's, that's one thing, but.
So why would anybody choose that?
Well, that's the idea.
You're just hoping that you will mitigate that by attrition.
Yeah, or just say, this is the last year.
We might go changes, let them know that we've made a transition plan, this is a transition year, and in twenty twenty-six. There will be, you'll have two high deductibles. That way, we have education this year.
Great.
We can try to talk to folks about moving over to the high deductible now, where they can get the contribution from the county, which has always been so generous. Fifteen, what, seventeen fifty? Thousand, to offset that deductible.
Yeah.
But give those people, our, I found that our population needs time to digest. And converse over it, and get upset about it, and complain about it, and then understand the reality that it's happening. Um, we just, I want to be, I want to be, I want to be thoughtful about it versus just saying we're not doing it. Because we did that to the other plan, we gave everybody well-advanced notice, but that's only if the plan, if the, we have a different board. Uh, from the previous two, but that was when Chuck and I came in, that was the original long-term goal. Uh, of that was to move away and just then offer high deductible plans to the population. We've been in this now three years, four years, a high deductible plan. Um, so people are well educated now on this, at least five maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, we've been on this now, the high deductible plan, in the beginning, it was really hard for people to grasp it. But I would think, uh, in the market, it's, the high deductible plans are pretty much where everybody has gone to nationally. Um, nationally to high deductible.
Yeah, the good thing, you're in a good spot, um, with those high deductible plans as far as enrollment too. It could be a lot of groups, I still have a couple of groups just introducing high deductibles because I've been scared of them. But honestly, but you're in a good spot, and I think what Allison's getting at, maybe we need that richest plan just a little bit. And it's more of a one or two year strategy kind of thing.
But that's only if the board wants to go on that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'd like Chuck's input because he was on this journey with me when I first came in, so.
Yeah, I mean, back even before the OAP plans, whether high deductible or not, with Cigna. When we had HMO ones, there was a discussion about doing away with the HMO type ones. And, I mean, we've already seen it too, like on some of the, back then, union plans, like Anthem was some of the really Maserati.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't Cadillac, I mean, there was something to be, we were calling them Maserati plans. Those aren't around anymore. And they had some, like, ten dollar copays, fifteen dollar copays.
Are you doing a prescription?
Yeah, yeah, really low copays on, on prescriptions. Even those union type plans are long gone. So even for the county offerings, yeah, where you've been looking to move off of the HMO and then related kind of plans. And now it's that OAP ten percent plan, that was the plan a while ago. I do have one quick question back to seven, loss ratios, those, um, including the reduction that claims for stop loss reimbursements or, okay. So it's hundred eighty-two percent even with stop loss reimbursements being.
All across the board.
Oh, okay. No, 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 I'm just.
Yeah.
Part of that is because we've had so many that have hit or are going to hit the, the one fifty, so.
Yeah, you're getting some good reimbursement back.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, the, the shock thing of projected two twenty-seven is reflective of, of all the stop loss reimbursements.
Yeah, so I don't know about the plan designs, um, if you want to kind of think about that and let me know. Because that will impact the budget year, but also communication and getting it out and education. If that is gonna be sunsetted for the following year.
We did some rough, um, planning on if you made those changes to the, uh, OAP. And it would come out to roughly about a forty thousand dollar savings.
The coins. Shoving it on to the employees.
Yeah.
The high deductible.
Yeah.
So looking at the time, oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Does our I-CAP plan come under this?
Uh, so we have an IMED plan, which is a separate voluntary plan that we do. But under Cigna, you are allowed to have one annual exam, eye exam, it doesn't take part in your, um, contacts or glasses. That's, that's if you want an IMED, which is a voluntary plan, that would then give you the frames and the lenses and all of that.
So that's a separate voluntary.
So everybody that's on the Cigna plan, whether they picked up IMED or not, can go in for one annual eye exam every year. And we really try to push that too, again, because of all the different things going on.
Yeah, the, the eye, uh, the voluntary provision plan, you just make sure you use it more than pays for itself.
Yeah.
You know, because it's a reimbursement.
So looking at the time, right, and, um, let me just round out real quick on the projections, and I think you'll have what you need, and then we can go. So page nine, um, again, high level, if you, I'm sorry if it's small font, but. What we do is we look at twenty-four months of claims, and I know we're kind of hammering this home, but the prior twelve. If you look in that very top row, you had about four million medical claims, it rose to four point seven, really, four point eight in the most recent. And you slide over, this is another area, this is, high on scripts anyways, put one point three to one six. Which, you know, that, that could be worse with the claims that are going on, I thought that it'd be more of a gap. And then that brings you to the totals on the right-hand side, five point four. And then that brings you to the totals on the right hand side, five point four.
So I just ask a quick question, these numbers real quick, is it because of the medical costs going up, or is it because more people are using the plan?
Oh, I'd say both, but I think it goes boils down to the, you have more people in the utilization. If you're playing, your medical plan's being used, and it's, and it it has affected some large losses.
And the only reason I'm saying that is, obviously, in walking in and talking about certain classifications of drugs. That are actually, for instance, insulin is now thirty bucks, so are we gonna see a reduction there? Or that's why I'm trying to figure out, is more people using it or?
So uh, so trends for pharmacy versus medical are almost twice as much.
Okay.
So, you know, seeing eleven, twelve percent on prescription drug medical trend. Um, it, on the medical side of it, it's more like five or six. So when you blend it, it's about eight.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I I don't, I wouldn't expect to see, I mean, America pays, I believe, twice as much as any other country. In prescription drug costs.
Yeah. I was just curious, thank you.
No, 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 it's a great question, I mean, I mean, you're, right now, you're at about twenty-five percent of your claims are pharmacy. It's a little high, I would say it's between twenty and twenty-five, so you're on a little bit of the high side on that. But on the flip side, a lot of these medications are keeping people out of the hospital too, so, and they're expensive, yeah.
Yeah. That's a good thing with, don't forget, Cigna does a good job with cost containment, disease management and all that good stuff. You have, you know, the biggest thing is the weight medications that are just everywhere on, especially on Bravo channel and stuff like that.
We do not have those.
We don't, we don't cover with Julie either.
You you cover them for diabetics.
They, right, they have to be.
Weight loss, and I would, you know, I would very much.
Cause those could be. Thousand dollars a month.
At least more, absolutely more.
Yep.
You you had that great conference I went to.
Yeah, you saw it.
It was stunning, the costs.
And once you start covering weight loss drugs at that amount of money, you can't take them off the plan, that's just gonna spiral way up.
Yeah.
Way up. Plus, there's, you know, the word's thrown out on those things, you've seen a lot of lawsuits, medical conditions tied to those drugs.
Yeah.
So I'd stay away from covering them. Diabetes is one thing.
I don't, yeah, yeah, no, no, that's right, that's right. But there's a lot of people that, I mean, I I I see this from Facebook and stuff.
That's right.
You can actually get a doctor on, you know, not your family doctor, you want this? Just take this, you know, go face to face with some somebody and they'll prescribe it for it.
Yeah, it's.
I just wanna make sure that we're not.
You know, I don't.
So if we, um, if you look at the box down at the bottom, really, so ultimately, on total claims, you went from about five point four to six point four. This is really a big nugget, going back to our opening statements. Um, we just put some stuff in red so you can highlight it, but again, you get, this is at one fifty for the spec on the stop loss. About a million dollar premium, but a hundred and twelve for admin for the medical aid. R X rebate is a hundred and three, okay? And then um, you wanna keep in mind, cause you do, Locky M contributes towards anyone that's enrolled for the high deductible plan. About three ninety-three, give or take, we got that number from Julie, so that's a cost, then it brings you about to seven mil. If you compare it to what your current budget is, give or take, that's where that big increase is coming from. So, that being said, if you go to the next page, which is page ten. Um, and I think we could just about round out the conversation here, you just bring over the projected claims. We also have Cigna run a projection, and then that, what that does, again, it's looking at your headcount at two hundred and sixty-five on the plan. Projecting forward, their claim pick is about dead on with our underwriting claims. It's only about thirty thousand different, A, yes, that makes you feel better, because ours means ours is right. But sometimes it depends on the conservative enough, it's always good to have, you know, the the medical carrier run a pick. So yes, the bottom line, that's what they're looking at for claims, right? But if you roll that a little bit right to about the middle, that's where we, we we recommend or suggest really. Looking at that new R X rebate of three forty-three and apply it. And then that brings down the overall increase a bit. Now again, so these will be adjusted a little bit, if we will, we can, we'll change it if we want to one seventy. We'll put that premium in here, we'll look at another month's claims.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so even.
Put up a little bit, but I think that will ratchet down and then we'll have really a firm numberish soon that Chuck and Annalese kind of work with. But um, it's all relevant, I don't think there's a silver bullet here to make, you know, a lot of this disappear, it's just, it is what it is. The thing with with, and you're self-funded, it's always, always gonna be a year towards tough. But I think going back, you know, I use the word loyal, but on a stop loss carrier, if you can weather good years with them and tough years. They that, they take that into consideration, so um.
Yeah, if you look at this twenty, so now we're down to twenty-one point eight, so one point two million dollar increase. So we we what we've done is we've put in the new prescription drug rebate program. Well, what this doesn't take into account is moving the spec level and, I know, stop loss marketing. So there's probably at least another hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Reduction.
Reduction off of that.
We're still above a million.
We're still at a million.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna, there's, I don't think there's much we can do.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, so Kate, real, my, I guess our last statement would be is, it's like, what can you somewhat control and what you can't? So we're trying to ratchet down and skinny those fixed costs to both level where they are currently. And then you just have the claims, people going to doctors and you get a bit. So that's what, that's the the main objective, is trying to fix costs, at least we can control that a little bit. I think we, again, we'll try to get stop loss for better, but.
Yeah, so I mean, we would recommend, let us continue on the stop loss marketing, let's get another month of claims down. Um, it's not gonna, the the one month of claims won't be a huge uh change to your projection. But it might help your stop loss. So, I mean, we're gonna have to wait anyway to lock it in, so even though we do have a firm quote with Cigna, I believe that's firm.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a worst case scenario that's better than what we're showing here. But I say wait for another month of claims, we'll, if you want, we can give you an even higher spec level to look at. I don't think it'll be worth, you know, that jump. I I I still think the one seventy number is probably a better place to be. Um, but we can try to riddle that and get that, get it down, maybe we get it down below the million, I don't know.
We just need to see what the next plan's coming at.
Uh, page fourteen, it's just the two items that we're recommending based on talking with pain. Uh, to add in to um our plan.
Yeah, so page fourteen, these are two items, um, easiest way to explain it, they're cost containment programs with Cigna. Um, there's a little bit of a, um, estimated savings you can see with the oncology. Off to the right hand side, it's basically gives you a quick description what it's about. Basically, it's uh, when we had a Cigna meeting, um, they recommended looking at your claims. It's almost like special extra care for folks that fall into that category. Um, you know, it produces a little bit of savings on twenty-five bucks, you know, per hit or per member. Uh, but again, it's just really working with the provider and the consulting as far as getting the very best treatment plan. Um, most of these, if you're fully insured, these are all added on um without a choice.
But I mean, this one, this one's gonna pay for itself, so we would recommend that.
Yeah, the second one down is more of a protection, um, Chuck will want to note it, it's about, it's about ninety-nine cents. An ad per member, right, it's not a lot of money, but what this does is. You pay Cigna a little that buck, right, for protection. Versus these massive, high cost prescriptions, and you can see them at the bottom, you know, LUXTURNA, so on and so forth. Instead of you getting the brunt of the full um cost of that medication, then you pay an admin fee for coverage. Um, again, a lot of these, it's growing, some of these can cost like two million, it it's a lot. The cost for prescriptions, so again, this is kind of.
So I mean, it started out, I think you were only at three or four drugs on the list, now you're at the six. And so I would say by next year, you probably have ten drugs on this list. Um, but what it does, it's basically reinsurance for you, it's almost like a stop loss coverage for high, these high cost. Uh, scripts, and again, there's only, like I said, six of them right now, but that list is gonna continue to grow.
For gene therapy.
Yeah, specifically.
I mean, looked at that the last three years, and we've held off because it started off with like two, we go to like three or four, and now we're at six. And I think this might just be based on our claims and stuff, it might be a big thing.
Slash it six thousand, but it gives you protection above.
Given our rate of increase and our stop costs and our claimants.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine problems.
Yes, I've got a group that's, that has one of these treatments on there, and it's a million dollars every year. It's the stop loss every year.
Scripts, yeah.
Well, we get one, I mean.
We get one, it cripples the plan, it really does.
So right now, Cigna, they give us a report, no one's, no one's on these drugs yet.
Yeah.
It could change the second we walk out of here. Again, it's just for those gene therapy, why they're doing it, because on average, most of them cost, you know, no, no, one point two. It's just, and then you pay a little, you know, like you said, about six grand for total members on the plan annually. To, rather than getting lost in one of these, you know. Um, it added protection, cost containment kind of thing, so. Alright, so I think we covered what we needed to cover, we're hoping it was interesting. Always interesting, and admit.
You guys, you guys deal with it every day.
It's, it's tough, you know, uh, when you see this data, you know, month after month, year after year, you can't, you know, I say to myself, how is this sustainable? But.
Well, I, uh, back home, my town, the the school board was talking about their health insurance increased by twenty percent. And I, my mouth, my jaw dropped, but um.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something that uh, we we didn't look at it this year because it's it's usually not a possibility right now, but I think I mentioned to you about. Looking at stop loss captives.
Yeah.
This isn't the year to do it, because you're, obviously, you're going through a tough period, but you know, maybe another year. I can look at getting you into a stop loss captive, um, you know, specifically for municipality type business. And the trends are better, but I mean, they would probably decline this one this year, but but perhaps. They don't wanna destroy it, you know. But I'm, I'm a big advocate of it, I think, you know, I've got quite a few of my clients in captives. Um, you know, not necessarily municipality, but other types of captives for them, and the trends are better, so.
Maybe once we get over this.
Yeah, once you get over the, you know, then you get a little better option.
Yeah, well, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, hopefully it was helpful.
It is very helpful.
Gotta get over the hump.
That's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get us that expert data.
Oh, yes, we will.
You gotta help give Chuck, you know, he's stressing out over here about the budget, so.
Gonna make him feel better.
Well, again, this is where we prepared for those rainy.
Sorry.
Alright, we're in, Jen. We prepared for the rainy days and that's our.